Thank you. Thank you, everyone. The first item on the agenda is the public hearing for the special exception dash twenty dash zero three dash zero one Amesville Volunteer Fire Rescue illuminated sign. Uh, where did Ms. Summers go? There she is. Thank you, Ms. Summers.
Speak loudly.
Thank you. Amesville Volunteer Fire Rescue has applied for a special exception for an illuminated sign pursuant to the Repentant County Code one seventy dash one oh seven B. The sign is an LED internally lit sign in which the fire departments and rescue squad displays messages to the community such as fundraisers, blood drops, and community news. The sign was installed in the fall of two thousand and nineteen. The planning commission had a preliminary review of this application at their June seventeenth meeting in which they moved to recommend approval to this board. The vote was unanimous. Staff would recommend the following conditions be placed upon this permit. One, the message on the sign will not change or display flashing or intermittent lights or lights of changing degrees of intensity with changes alternating of on not less than one hour cycle except a sign indicating the time or temperature. The maximum size allowed is ninety-nine by seventy-six, and if damaged, the sign may be replaced with the same size or smaller. And the president of the fire department, of the Amesville Fire Department, is here as well.
Thank you very much, Ms. Summers. Would the applicant like to make a statement at this time?
I would.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins. All right, that takes us through the public hearing portion of the proceedings. If you would like to speak once I open the public hearing, if you would raise your hand, you'll be identified by the chair. If you could approach the microphone, please, and state your name and the district that you're from, and keep your comments to about three to five minutes, directing them to the board, we should be all set. This is specifically the public hearing for the Amesville Volunteer Fire Rescue Sign. So the comments should be oriented toward that sign. Anyone who wishes to speak regarding that special exception for Amesville Volunteer Fire Rescue Sign, please raise your hand. I declare the public hearing open. Yes, Ms. Miller.
DeMaris Miller, Hampton District. I'm actually speaking for my husband, who is, uh, meetings like this are very difficult for him, so he was not able to be here. And he wanted me to say how very much he likes the sign, and he's so glad they have it, and we thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else wishing to speak regarding the Amesville Volunteer Fire Rescue Sign? If there's no further comment, I would declare this public hearing to be closed. Uh, Mr. Fraser, I believe this is a matter in your district. Uh, do you have something that you wanted to discuss or something to say to kick off this discussion?
Oh, I think that, uh, well, we've had unanimous support from all the speakers tonight on it. And, uh, I think that this COVID, uh, response shows that the signs could show a, uh, lend a very, um, you know, good hand in, uh, getting information out to the public as he drives by. So I think it's a very, very good thing that the fire department have a sign like that.
Thank you, Mr. Fraser. Did you wish to say anything, uh, about your application at this time, Mr. Atkins?
Jack Hackens, I'm president of Amesville Volunteer Fire. We just replaced the system sign. It was already illuminated from the inside. We also went twenty-first century, we came, replaced what we had. We had to go to the electronic sign, which now we can change with a computer. And it's very easy to change. This is JB's, the one putting all the messages on it right now. And according to the code, it's no use to go into it. Assistant sign, it was supposed to be a sample from the county ordinance. I've got it right here. There's no use to beat a dead horse, is the way I look at it. And I appreciate the sign being approved tonight. But this thing, it's been going on over four years. And I must be been up here twenty-four times. Just appreciate all your help. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Atkins. Uh, would it be appropriate to kick off the rest of this discussion with a motion in regards to this application?
As opposed to motion that we approve the special exception application with the any, uh, uh, what the applicant has submitted, but any other additional, uh, I don't know really of, uh, any additional, uh, conditions that we've placed on it, but whatever's in the file. I mean, the sign is there, the sign is not going anywhere, the sign's programmed, and we can, it serves a very great public function.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fraser. I have a motion to approve the special exception for the Amesville sign. Do I have a second?
Second, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Whitson. Is there any further discussion? I guess I just wanted to make sure that the motion, as I understand it, is to include the conditions that were recommended by the planning commission of these.
I don't remember us having any specific conditions, uh, applied to it other than what they had, uh, made in the application.
Yeah, okay.
The conditions included in the staff report are, um, largely based on the code and the way it stands right now. You can't alternate the message, um, more than once an hour, otherwise it becomes an animated sign. The size of the current sign is, in fact, ninety-nine by seventy-six, and so the idea is that this approval would allow this sign, but not a larger sign. And then if it's damaged, it could be replaced, and they wouldn't have to go back through this process again.
Thank you for an inquiry, does Mr. Curry. Is there any further discussion? Thank you, and if there's no further discussion, and, uh, the applicant is satisfied, I think we can go ahead and vote on this. Mr. Fraser?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
And I also. Thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Atkins, for submitting the special exception I take this to the next item on the agenda, the public hearing, SC twenty dash zero three dash zero two, the Risk and Strategic Management Corporation Amendment of Current Special Exception eighteen dash zero five dash zero four. Thank you, Ms. Summers.
Thank you. Mr. Blake has requested on behalf of RSM a special exception permit, which would replace his original permit of special exception eighteen oh five oh four, to allow for additional training days. This property is owned to agricultural and is eighty-four acres in size. It's located on Sherwin Lane in Amesville. The applicant owner currently provides training for life and safety situations, and all training is conducted outdoors. They've requested to amend several of the original conditions of their permit. The first proposed change would be to the current condition number two and four, to read a maximum ten training days per month. The second proposed change would be to the current condition number five, allowing for three mini buses instead of the allowed two. On board docs, as Mr. Curry has provided, I have done a comparison of showing what the current conditions are and what is proposed. On January ninth of two thousand and eighteen, um, the applicant did apply for a permit at ten Old Kennels Lane, who was withdrawn. They came back in March of two thousand and eighteen, applied again at Old Kennels. That application was denied and then withdrawn. On May, in May of two thousand and eighteen, they applied, took their first permit on Sherwin Lane, and it was approved with the conditions. If you'll remember earlier this year, um, in late November, they, of two thousand and nineteen, they applied to amend this permit, and then it was, was withdrawn at the board's public hearing at that, um, at the January meeting. With that history, flood us up with this application for your consideration, and applicants are present.
Thank you very much, Ms. Summers. Mr. Blake, do you have anything you'd like to add at this time?
Well, thank you for, uh, seeing us again. Uh, just to quickly summarize, we have eight of our local neighbors who are on board with our application. We have letters from five of them and verbal confirmation from another two. We also have a number of businesses who are supporting our application. This is a direct, uh, request of the World Bank to provide two, um, sorry, forty-two courses a year lasting two days. Uh, so the ten days a month would be the maximum limit that we would need in order to meet their requirements and also continue our current courses. Uh, we don't anticipate needing that amount at all. We've also, uh, we're with the VDOC, we came out to the land, and we did a study, and in terms of traffic usage on Sherwin Lane, it was estimated that we would be no more than forty percent, probably about twenty-five percent of an average family in, uh, household in terms of traffic going in and out. We go on the land in the morning, then we leave in the evening before five-thirty, uh, so we're very, uh, we're only on the land for a short period of time. We've also offered to pay five thousand dollars towards the maintenance, up to five thousand dollars towards the maintenance of the Sherwin Lane road as well, to contribute to local community. We've done two noise tests with members of the board or for the county. Uh, the upper ceiling was sixty, sixty-five decibels, our understanding, is the ordinance, uh, which is section one seventy, one one seven, subsection two D. In rural areas, allowed up to ninety decibels, and in, um, urbanized areas, eighty. So we're well beneath the noise threshold by about thirty decibels from our calculations. We've also often done noise testing with other local neighbors, and we can also erect sound barriers to reduce noise as well. Uh, since we started training, we've made continual adjustments to try and bring it down. We did, um, we went out with two neighbors who were complaining on the fourteenth of February of last year. We made some adjustments. They accept the noise, and we've made further improvements to the noise as well, including discontinuing certain noise simulations. So we're, we're doing our very best, and we'll continue to work with the neighbors in order to meet their requirements. Uh, we're also seeking to contribute to the local community as well. We're offering up to two hundred and thirty thousand dollars of in-kind contributions to the police and schools authority. We do this all already with, uh, schools authority in Virginia, DC, and North Carolina, where we do a lot of pro bono work, and we've offered it to the schools authorities here. And we're also offering to help out the police as well in terms of running training simulations and so forth, to contribute to society. If we're allowed to do this, uh, we estimate that we will bring in a minimum of one point eight million dollars directly into local businesses over a five-year period, up to three point one million dollars. So this would be very important for us, certainly with the current economic situation, but we would also redirect every possible penny to the local economy, uh, ranging between one point eight to three point one million dollars over a five-year period. Um, just to provide context, there are five rangers in that area immediately around us. Uh, often we get, uh, the noises, other people are using, farmers and the hunk club and so forth, uh, people think it's us, and we're not even there. Uh, we don't make much noise at all. We're almost invisible, and we're almost inaudible. We had no complaints whatsoever until we made an application to extend, so we had no, uh, noise issues until we put the application in for more time. Uh, our goal is to be a good member of society here, to contribute in for small, good, and veteran businesses. We train good people going out to do good things, and we believe we're good people, and we will continue to, uh, to try and work with the neighbors, if we may be unhappy with some of the things that we're trying to do. I give you those comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. If anyone on the board has any discussion amounts of members I'm going to go into the public hearing. So the same rules apply for this public hearing. This is a public hearing regarding the Risk and Strategic Management Corporation Amendment of the Current Special Exceptions. I would ask that you keep your comments to that topic only for this public hearing. There will be a separate public comment period later for other topics. Does anyone wish to speak to the Risk and Strategic Management Corporation Special Exception? I declare the public hearing open. Please raise your hand. Yes, ma'am, in the back. That's, sir, I called on the lady behind you, I'm sorry. Ladies first, sometimes.
Hello, my name is Kendra Settle-Hawn. Um, I'm family runs Settles Grocery in Fort Mill. Um, I am here to speak for Mike, um, as far as his company and the business that he does bring into this county. Um, I do understand the concern that the neighbors have. Um, I do support what Mike does as far as the business that he brings in, I can attest to that. He orders his supplies from us, he does, um, his vehicle services and sales with us. Um, I have twenty employees, fifteen of which live in this county, um, so it would be silly of me not to want to bring this business that Mike is offering into this county. If I felt the parameters of his training, um, were too crazy, two o'clock in the morning hunting, I would maybe not support it, but I really think that the eight-to-five temperament that he has and the regulations that he is following currently aren't fair. Um, and like I said, he is doing what he's saying, what he says he is supporting, wants the businesses in this county. I have invoices inside the show, uh, DB, uh, and, uh, thank you. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Evening, Bill String, Wakefield District. I'm in Skywood Cafe, and I would like to continue on that, the economic aspect of what Mike's company has done. They use our company for their catering, and they've done that from the beginning, day one. I go out there two days a month. And if you were to approve his application, and you could increase that, each meal I deliver, I have to charge a four percent prepared meal tax for the county, which goes directly to the county. So if he is allowed to operate more days, that's that many more meals, and that much more county money that will go to the county revenue. And perhaps maybe down the road, that might help out with property taxes, which you kept to, to keep them from going up. But there is an economic benefit to everybody, and, um, as far as I see, I'm out there twice a day, each time, maybe three times, once in a while. I've been there when they're shooting and doing their little training courses, you know, little groups. It's not that noisy, and I don't even know what's going to happen. I just come there and pick up my things, and drop off. I hear a couple pots pop, talking, and it's just training, we're just having education courses, and they're very neat. They, when I come to pick everything up, everything I brought, all stacked up, cleaned out, lined up, ready for me to go, looks like nobody's been there, and they're waiting for me to fly the truck. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. String. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Tim Jones, Jackson District. I'm one of his boarding neighbors. Um, I've been here too many times over this, and I hope it gets put to sleep tonight. They don't live up to what they promise. Uh, the noise that they put off, I, I just wish y'all could hear it and understand the people that come in are benefiting from this man. They're businesses, I can understand that. But they don't live next to us. And the noise that we put up with, and I watched a training video the other night, he's already got his foot in the door, and he's saying, this is just phase one, and there's going to be other phases to come, bring the World Bank in. This county is an excellent county to retire in, and I know people don't want to hear that all the time, but I fell in love with this county back in the early seventies, I wanted to retire here, and I finally was able to do it, only to have to listen to this. And I put up three days a month, and I wish that if you want to go, continue on three days a month, we would just have to suck it up and do it. But, um, five days a week, it's not right for the, for the residents of this, this county. And I worked too hard in my life to sit there and have to listen to that, and with the pandemic that came down, the peace and quiet came back again, but I know, I'm hoping it's going to stay that way. But if, if y'all watch that video, you see his intentions, his foot's in the door. I would, uh, highly recommend looking at that, uh, and I think I would like to see a permit revoked, actually, right now. But if not, uh, I'll suck it up for not three years, but it don't need to go on, not in this county. Let him go elsewhere. About two, three hundred acres, do what he wants, but not on eight-five acres. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir, in the back.
I'm Brian Adams, Jackson District. I just wanted to talk about what, you know, everybody's here talking about. You know, Mike really does do exactly what he says he's going to do. I mean, I've been working with him now for two years on everything that he's done. He buys meat and stuff from our slaughterhouse. You know, unfortunately, this county still needs to be a working county, not a retirement home. You understand? I mean, everybody else here needs to work, make money, and do this. Mike does everything he says he does. He's been over backwards for everybody, giving y'all, everybody around, and he does what he says he's going to do, and, you know, I understand why we're still here talking about this. You know, they talk about noise, the surrounding neighbors, we all make the same amount of noise. And I've watched the training, he's invited us, he's invited everybody around to come when them courses are running, and said, set your own eyes, make your own opinion. And, you know, what he's doing here for the county, I think, is great. I mean, he's offered to work for the schools, to do training, and look at the times that we're in right now. I mean, I think we need it more than ever, and this guy's going to give it to y'all, but nobody wants to grab it and run with it. And that's all I got to say. You know, I hope y'all pass this. Ten days is nothing. I mean, we have more traffic on that road than he'll ever have. But nobody wants to look at it that way. And some of the people that are complaining, they don't even live on the road.
But you do live on that road.
I do, sir. I do. I live in behind the slaughterhouse. We have so many people coming to that slaughterhouse. He's got three buses. His noise is nothing. I mean, y'all come, the next time he runs a course, y'all come to my slaughterhouse, buy some meat, sit over there, see y'all here. Didn't y'all make y'all's own opinion? But, I mean, I think this has just gone on too long. But the man, the man pays the taxes here. We pay our taxes. You know, it's just, it's just crazy that you, you buy stuff, and then you gotta let other people give you permission to do it. I just think it's not right, but that's my opinion.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening, my name is Joyce Jones. I'm President, Jackson District, and it's Jason Maynard of RSM Training Laboratory. Our house is the closest to RSM, it's only five hundred and seventy feet from the property line, which includes a two hundred and fifty-foot power line easement, and we own in this cleared of trees, not buffered by dense forest. This application, like RSM's previous application, states that their training noise is similar to small appliances like a coffee percolator and electric shaver. On multiple occasions, the training noise from RSM brings us out of our house, which has six-inch solid log of walls. That is not the noise level of a coffee percolator at six hundred feet. The excessive noise started February of nineteenth, when RSM shot a very loud explosions that rattled our windows. We notified the county official in the morning, and Mike White came to our house in that afternoon and did sound tests with my husband. They agreed on the sound level for future trainings, which lasted only for a couple of months. After that, over the summer months, explosions got louder and louder. We've not contacted Mike White again to work with him, because it would be pointless. He did not honor his word regarding the noise level that he agreed upon during the meeting in, in February. In December, Mike White took several planning commission members of RSM training property for tours. During the show and tell, Mike White fired the half-charge blank shots, detailed his application, and recorded fifty-six decibel readings. RSM's noise survey down in February stated the loudest noise RSM made is approximately fifty-eight decibels. What is interesting, less than two weeks after the planning commission's visit and noise survey in the morning of December twenty-sixth, we heard loud explosive shots while in our home. My husband, Tim, went out to investigate and found Mike White trespassing on our property, doing sound tests with someone on RSM's property and taking decibel readings. If he is so very committed to using these half-charge blank shots with fifty-eight decibel readings, why is he doing sound tests with much louder blank shots on our property without asking? We notified the county of Mike White's trespassing and of loud explosive shots. RSM shoots the low-level sound half-charge blank shots when they know they're being monitored or watched. Other R, otherwise, RSM can shoot any blank shot that they want, and they can, because the current special exception permit operating conditions does not contain any limits to the decibels for training. This item was missed under Repentant Code one seventy dash fifty-three, IB six, when the original SE permit was granted. Please do not be misled by him again when you have witnesses from neighboring residents that the noise level is significantly louder. Remember, we hear loud explosions through six-inch solid walls, permit distance of over six hundred feet. This is not a coffee percolator. RSM's application letter includes, excuse me, application includes letters of support. All but one are from business owners, six are from the Addams Family, and that their joint property line with RSM is only a hundred and three feet, which is located at the farthest corner away from RSM's noise training. But their homes are over half a mile down the lane. They don't hear the noise that we do. Remember, our house is five hundred and seventy feet from our property line, and we have, um, over fifteen hundred feet of joint property line with RSM's land. The third paragraph in RSM's amendment application reads that our application in two thousand and eight stated three days was the current tempo of training. The current tempo of training was in quotes. I reread the RSM's SE permit eighteen oh five oh four application and did not find those words anywhere. What I did find on page seven of the application, under the frequency of training section, was the following sentence, and I quote, "Currently, the frequency of training is one course every one to two months, lasting one to two days." RSM's application also states they had free training, been offered to all the churches within the local area. I asked our pastor at United Methodist Church if our church had received RSM's free offer for training. She said it has not. Our pastor's a member of the Repentant Clergy Association. She sent out an email to all the clergy members asking if their churches had received an offer for free training from RSM. Six members replied back that they had not received any offer from RSM. Not a single Repentant Clergy member replied back and received an offer for training from RSM. This should cause concern for the board supervisors. Documents submitted to governmental agencies should not contain false information. Their current permit allows for three days. This new application is seeking ten days, which is a three hundred and thirty-three percent increase. It's a significant increase. RSM's application states that some of their courses only have five trainees. On March second, Mark Blank told my husband and I in the courtroom that RSM's small classes are closed classes with five or six trainees. His clients request private sessions. RSM is making a business decision to train only five or six people, only utilizing eighteen to twenty percent of the level class size, and throwing away eighty percent of what the county's granted them. Training small private groups seems very out of place for humanitarians. True humanitarians would want to share all of their resources to better their causes. I hope that you are all able to view the RSM's training video link that I sent you. I have a handout that includes several screenshots from the video that I'd like to go over regarding the specifics of RSM's current training offerings and this application.
I, I hate to interrupt you, but in the interest of fairness and time, I, I would ask that you keep your comments relatively brief at this point.
I do want to say that Joyce handed up a document, it is at your place.
It looks like that this on the front, it has a screenshot of the computer. I'll go over them quickly. The first one states, and this is in RSM's video training, that's on their website, it's online with the word. online, the world can see and advertise. RSM provides an environment that includes blank firing weapons, smoke grenades, and simulated explosions. This screenshot verifies that RSM shoots simulated explosions as well as half-flowed blank shots. I've been describing this to the county for over two years. Notice that RSM's application does not include any information about simulated explosives. The next page is a screenshot when the training video describing United Nations and militia base includes six buildings and advertises overnight accommodations for 40 participants. RSM is offering training options that are not in compliance with their existing SE permit 180504. It states training is to be conducted between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM with a maximum of 30 trainees. Their current application that you're ruling on tonight also states on page three, and I quote, "At the request of one neighbor, we removed the request for overnight camping, yet the video is still advertising overnight accommodations five months after RSM submitted their application." And on the very last screenshot, the training video states that RSM allows other organizations to use the training gowns for their own self-run training and exercise needs. Their current permit, 180504, does not include provisions for another company to use or rent RSM's training gowns for conducting their own self-run training exercise programs. Again, RSM is offering training options that are not in compliance with their existing permit. Please deny the application. Increasing the training operation days to 10 days a month would not satisfy all the general conditions under Rapoanic Code 170-52, A, E, and J. The training noise would reduce the quality of peaceful quality of life that we have in our neighboring properties. Increasing the training days would further reduce the value of adjacent properties. No one would want to buy a house where shooting happens two weeks a month. And a paramilitary training property operating two weeks a month would be detrimental to principle seven of a comprehensive plan. Thank you for your time. I know it was lengthy, but we've gone over this so many times. Thank you.
Very much. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Tom Dean, Jackson District. Makes the third time I've had to come here to speak about pretty much the exact same issue. I'm against anything if you're being afforded to RSM. I'll try to keep this very short to do a recap. I have a large amount of land which actually borders the problem. So, I'm very familiar with what goes on. I purchased my land a short while before there was an original hearing for this. Unfortunately, I was not sent a letter about it, so I did not get the way on from the start. My opinion would be the same as it is today. We have laws and permits, and they hold the society together. If we all do whatever we want, it will be nothing but chaos. This is the reason why we're here and we're going through this process. I've worked as a government contractor the majority of my career, and that time I've worked with many overseas contractors, contracts that require similar trainings. Facilities for these trainings were thousands of acres, you're not to disturb anyone. I purchased, I purchased a lot on a non-state maintained road for a reason, privacy and safety. With every person they train at this facility, the likelihood of someone with less than honorable intention rises. Plenty of fantastic people traveling, receives the work. Unfortunately, that type of work also does attract a disproportionate number of less-than-adorable people. Prisons provide, prisons and trash dumps provide an economic advantage to a certain location, but no one wants to live next to one. I do not want the noise, traffic, hundreds of people knowing where my, where myself or my neighbors' secluded houses are. Local people are one thing. Having people plus in from who knows where, Virginia or surrounding states is not my idea of privacy or safety. I purchased this land to be left alone and to mitigate the criminal elements in surrounding areas. RSM has their supporters, mostly appears to be locals who make a tremendous amount of money off the project, won't marry the other. I understand why they would support this for the good of their own business, and don't disparage this. I promised to keep this short, and as mentioned before, this is the third time I've been here to come to speak, but pretty much the same thing. Last time I was here for a hearing with this board, things were not looking good for RSM. It was suggested by a person on the board that Mr. Blank pulled his application and worked with the neighbors. Mr. Blankly smartly pulled his application right there. I did not hear from Mr. Blank. I did not expect him. He and I had already had an honest conversation about this before. We knew where each other stands, and what, but what was a shock and disappointment to me was the suggestion by the board to pull the application. What happened next was predictable. We're all here, back to the same thing, and nothing changed. This only allowed him, this only allowed him to bring this back in less than a year. If this happens every time, we'll be here every few months and discuss the exact same thing. I don't really think this is in the spirit of procedures, that's why I hope that this is it for the next year. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Yes, in the back. I believe that's Mr. Anderson. Hello.
Good evening, my name is Bill Anderson. I think part of you know me, I live at 143 Sherrigan Lane. And I know you guys have had a really busy day, so I will keep it short. I'm assuming that you all got an opportunity to read the letter that consent in, and so I'm not gonna make any further comments on that. But in my years on the BZA, we saw a lot of projects come through, but never did I see anything with the potential magnitude of this project ever approved on a one-lane, private, gravel road with such a small end. So, respectfully, we ask that we accept the planning commission's recommendation to deny the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? There's no one else that wishes to speak to the RSM application, I would declare this public hearing closed. Mr. Frasier, I believe this is in your district again. Would you like to begin this conversation or make a motion to the effect on this application?
It's in my district again because it hasn't moved.
Yes, I'm afraid it's still there, just like the first one.
Well, I guess I need to apologize for making that recommendation that applicant withdraw for application and work with the neighbors, because it appears that either that didn't work or the, the efforts for some reason were stalled. I don't know which, but it comes down to the point where we have quite a few people in the business community that support you, Mr. Blank, and quite a few of your neighbors that don't. And that puts us in a very difficult position. I think that we should just let this permit play out for the remainder of the initial five years, and maybe in that time period, we can get the problem with your neighbors worked out. And I don't think many of them are ever gonna be happy. They certainly won't be happy with the increase in the hours of operation and the days. So, it's my recommendation that we deny this application, the increase that you applied for.
Thank you, Mr. Frasier. Do I have a second for that motion? Go on, second that motion, for purposes of discussion. Are there any questions for the applicant or anything further which should be discussed with the applicant?
I don't know if the applicant would want to have a chance to rebut some of the Joneses' comments there. I noticed in our packet, there's a couple more letters of neighbors, immediate neighbors that support the application. The application is, it's modified from, as I understand it, from three events to 10 events a month, and it's almost halfway through the five-year time period, as I understand it. And I do not see a problem with giving the applicant a chance to act right, and at the end of the five years, I presume he tends to be there for much longer than five years. And so, at the end of the five years, of course, if he's restricted to the three events a month, he can come back for more at that point, or if he, if nobody's dissatisfied with the 10 events, then that would be obviously the best-case scenario for everybody. I actually support his application. I think it's good for the county all the way around, and especially given the fact he's offered to train the schoolteachers at no charge, and I think it's an overall benefit to the county.
Are we going in order here?
We don't have to. We can.
Sure, I'll jump in. Mr. Blank, I wonder if you could just come up, because I had a series of questions I wanted to ask you. Can you hear me okay?
Absolutely.
Yeah, my voice is not problematic in that regard. Let me first ask the county attorney, what is, just to be clear, from a decimal perspective, can you just nail down for us exactly what the decimal, decimal level is for a property a seven-day?
I'm gonna look it up, and I'll get right back.
Okay, all right, I'll keep going. I just want to make sure that we all agree on that. Are you, are you creating any direct local jobs that Mr. Adams spoke about, obviously being dangerously employed, part because of your contribution to his business? Miss Suttle said the same, and then the folks from Skyward Cafe, obviously, are benefiting. Are you creating any direct jobs that will exist in the community that otherwise wouldn't absent your operation at that address?
Yeah, our intention is to seek out people who are interested in the role management in the training as well, so that we provide part-time employment for a number of people, potentially up to full-time employment.
Okay, and then you mentioned, I think you mentioned at a minimum of $1.8 million over a five-year period, $360,000 a year, which works out to $30,000 a month minimum. Could you just explain to me or disaggregate that $30,000 a month total and what it is comprised of?
Absolutely. So, just clarifying, we do a lot of training, not all of it within Sherrigan Lane. So, when we talk about overnight, we're not talking about accommodating anybody in the wooded area overnight, we're accommodating off-site. So, we will be pushing all of our business, we're opening up a small office in Warrington area, all of the businesses that we require to support the Warrington office and Sherrigan Lane will go through local businesses here. So, that would be everything from soft drinks, food, servicing of vehicles, fuel, all of those kind of things, any construction. We're building a, as I said, an office in Warrington, and we're using all local businesses to build it up as much as we possibly can. And then as we improve things in Warrington and elsewhere, we'll be coming back to the local businesses. Our goal is to push everything through, through this community as much as we can, employment and other.
And that amounts to basically $1,000 a day?
Yeah, so the World Bank has asked for 40 courses maximum, maximum, and they've asked for between 12 people to 24 people. So, the low end, the minimum, would be $1.8 million over five years minimum. The maximum, if they have four courses, which they probably won't, to be honest, would be $3.5 million. When we talk about running a five-person course, unless we have 11 people on our normal standard course, we lose money. But we're not gonna turn away, save the children, the oxen, or these other good people who are going to dangerous environments for the sake of money. So, we commit to training, even if there's only five people, we'll do so even if we lose money. That's just the way it works. But our lowest income, if we're allowed to do this with the World Bank, and they're already sending 12 people on the course, that would be one me, but that would be 1.8 along with our current courses, up to 3.5, all of which will come into this community.
Okay, and then there's been some conflicting and confusing information. I've made a site visit, and it's confused me further regarding overnight accommodations. Obviously, you don't have anything there, you don't have any buildings, certainly not anyone. No one would want to sleep in the buildings you have. What is this information that's out there publicly on your website and elsewhere, or in videos, that suggests that you have accommodations for 40? And why is that information out there?
We have a video where we say we're arranged accommodation, and when we were in Manassas, what we did, we had a deal through local hotels, where if they wanted us to do the board and lodging, we would book it through the hotels. We don't do any evening training, we're out by 5:30. We're out, we're finished by 5:00, we're out by 5:30. We never do any weekends. Somebody is gonna spot us pretty quick if we're running around in the woods at night. Sound travel's even further at night. We accommodate people probably about 30 miles away, in hotels.
Okay, so you have no intention of ever having any, anyone staying there overnight for any reason?
Only me and my children, if that's permissible, for a camping trip. Apart from that, no one else.
Okay, and I think they're still looking at this question. Mr. Jones, I heard in his comments, said something to the effect of five days a week. I thought I heard that.
We, no, we did, when we were here last time, we were asking for five days a week, and then we reduced it down to 10 days a month.
Okay.
So, we're not asking for five days a week, we're asking for 10 days a month. We can also spread it out, so we're not running solid blocks at time as well. We have flexibility, so we can do three days with gaps in between on one week, two days on another, we can kind of spread it out. We're not gonna do holidays, anything like that, when people are home. So, it'll be 10 days maximum a month. And to be honest, we don't think we're even gonna use that, to be honest. We don't want to keep on coming back to you. I don't know what this phase is that we're talking about. Maybe they've seen a business plan, I have from my company, but this is all we need, the top ceiling amount.
So, from a business growth perspective, are you suggesting that this World Bank contract would take you to basically your maximum capacity as a corporation?
Absolutely.
And not intend to do anything more with that property, other than this, what, the 120 you've stated so far?
No, absolutely. And to be honest, so there's basically two pools of people who get trained for whom we support. We're the only company in America that does this in this manner. One is the open pool of people, the saving children, the oxen, and so forth. They would send one or two people on the course, and we run up to 30 people maximum. If two people want to be trained, we will train them anyway, because they're gonna head off to Yemen, and they don't control the schedule, so they're gonna go somewhere dangerous. The World Bank is basically at the pool, and they are releasing an award that is rebid every five years. So, if we don't do it now, we would have to wait five years before this opportunity came back up. There is no one beyond that that we can train. And even if we do, they were, we would not come back to you again for a whole bunch of reasons.
I'm gonna put you down to the spot. 120 days, to me, on its face, seems like a per year, seems like a significant, clearly a significant jump from what you're doing, and I think that might be a large part of the vocal opposition from certain of your neighbors. If you can answer now, I think it would be worthwhile for you to do so. Would there be any scenario under which you would accept a lower per-year limit in terms of the total number of days within a calendar year period? And I ask that, recognizing that your request here is driven by a contract, and I respect your business person, but obviously, we have the balances against the interests of the neighbors and the fact that there are concerns. So, if you could just address whether or not you could come off of the 120 days?
We could, we could. We were working off ceiling amounts. The World Bank needing 84 days in the year at the most, then we were running over the courses, and we were looking to run maybe one a month for those. We could, we could break it down.
What could you bring it down to?
105, if that was permissible. I mean, we'd then have to start potentially turning people away or canceling courses unless they hit a larger number. But if we could have 105, 100 would be workable, but difficult, but we would accept obviously any allowance that you guys would allow for this.
Do you have an answer on the, and I should know that, but I don't off the top of my head?
Yeah, I'm sure you can answer this.
Or do you mind coming around and just speaking in the microphone so everybody hears it clearly? Sorry, hate to do that to you.
That's all right, I'll be right back.
That's all right, I'll be right back. It's a 117 dash 117 noise, and I'm going to treat this as an impact noise, so that's B3. For the purpose of this chapter, impact noises shall be considered to be those noises whose peak values are more than 3 decibels higher than the values indicated on the sound level meter set in slow response. I mean, that's just the menu tool. So that triggers table E2, table 5. Impact noises shall not exceed the sound pressure set for table 5 at non-residential district boundary line, 90 decibels. One impact noise per day beyond the line lines of 120 decibel.
So what's the bottom line on the property line? I mean, having spittered and taken tests, what would be permissible standing on the Joneses, property line, just strictly following the ordinance for that property?
If it's an impact noise, it'd be 90.
Okay.
And it seems to envision one per day that's greater than that, but not more than 120, that's audible beyond the line.
But there's no, on the impact noise at 90 decibels, you're suggesting there's no, there's nothing in the ordinance regarding frequency of that?
It says nothing about the frequency.
Okay, so the frequency only relates to the higher decibel on the, at 120?
That's where it says number one, which is Arabic number one. One impact noise per day beyond the line, the maximum of 120.
Okay. Thanks.
That's all it says.
Okay. Mr. Bligh, when we were out recently on your property, could you just remind me what, generally across the board for different tests you did, what were the decimal levels?
So, yeah, so we use a number of different noise simulators. We use the handgun simulator, we use a 556 rifle simulator, and we use what is a cap that goes into the handheld device, simulator, explosion, or if you go into a shot, it would be fired through the mechanism. The general rating is about 45 to 50 decibels, going up to 60 for the handheld bang, that only happens a couple of times a day. And the highest reading of 60, 65 maximum is what we tested. We also tested it in the summer, but then we tested it in the winter, hence the reason of doing it in December, because phonology muffles a lot of the noise as well. So we wanted to see the noise levels in the best case scenario and the worst case scenario so that we can then readjust ourselves if we found that the noise was traveling further in the winter season when there's no leaves on the play. But we read 60 maximum, basically.
Okay. All right, thanks very much. Ms. Smith, may I just ask one more question of the neighbors and I promise I'll be done. Mr. and Mrs. Jones, I wonder if I could just ask you a question?
Go ahead.
Yeah, thanks very much. Is your, is your primary concern with operations there, would it be fair to say that your primary concern is mortars? Is that what it comes down to?
Mortars, the loud ones that he shoots four times a day, which Mr. Ron McElloch was there one day when he heard it.
Four mortars?
Yeah, he shoots off mortars over there, the little 556 caps, we can tolerate that.
Okay.
But when I met with Mr. Bligh that evening, he boldly told me alive, when he called over and said, set off this, and they were just them caps. The mortars that he set off, he did not set off for me that evening. He's a very dishonest person, and I know he did smoke and mirrors to the county out there, because on the 26th, when they caught him trespassing, he'd set off one of them mortars. And that's what got me up there on the power line to see if he was up there, and sure enough, he was setting off there from our property.
We were inside our home, six-inch solid walls, not like a regular.
Log walls, just a log house.
And we can hear it, that's not 60 decibels, it's 600 feet, it's not.
Our yellow lab has had two seizures when he sets off them mortars, and he apologized the first time for it. But he turned around and continues to do it. My dog's had seizures twice, and he's gonna have, he's gonna have major problems on his hands if I lose that dog. He's a, he's a trained dog, he's a very.
There we go. The property is very long and very narrow, and the way that it rolls, you can't really hear anything from certain lengths so far back. And if you look at his map, back at the very back is the end of our house, which is, is like I said, 570 feet, 250 is cleared, no trees, no dense, you know, forest, no leaves any time of year, and we can hear.
200 feet up is clear, 250 is the power line.
Right.
Right. So we lost, we lost that in the wintertime when he's training and there's no leaves, the wind blows, it's even horrible. You know, he just picked the wrong spot. I've offered this man to buy his property out so he wouldn't lose his own land, and he denied it. But he turned around, when he done all that clearing and brought all them don'ts in there is what he did, he destroyed the beauty of the land. And it's his land, I guess he can do it, but.
This is a cultural history, like not commercial. Using commercials is totally different, but this land is not zoned that, he had to get a special exception to be able to do this. That's not what this was for.
And let me ask you this, I put Mr. Bligh on the spot with a tough question. So my tough question to you is that we're sorting this out to some extent. If someone's standing at your house on a spot basis checking, on a surprise basis, without him knowing what the sound is coming out of one of his closets, they're standing at your house, based on what you've experienced so far, if you kept his noise below 60 decibels, I know you have a shooting range, so I think you have some concept of what things sound like, different ammunition, et cetera. Do you, given the position of your house on your own property in relationship to his, would that, would, do you think that would be a non-factor for you? Would it have no adverse effect on you?
Would they want to set every eight hours a day, cause he shoots multiple different times a day?
Right.
And it would have to be in written condition, it's monitored, I think the county should need to do spot checks sporadically without warning, is when he's monitoring, he does the low end. And the low end is not any more than a hunting rifle, which is what my husband agreed to back in February, but that's not what he does all the time. He does that, we think, monitor and look at.
Okay.
He's not honest and truthful, he didn't live up to agreement. And my husband gave him a louder swam than he asked for in the application, and he still shoots louder than that.
It's the only way he's gonna train them people, by setting off loud explosions to catch him, surprise him, and scare the living crap out of him, is what he's doing. So he can easily take smoke and mirrors, he's an expert at that, he's saying that over the last two months.
Okay.
I'd, if you wanna let him finish his permit out, the way he's doing it, he's doing it, but.
No worries.
I don't want him to pay so much. And hunting out there, I moved out there tired because I love, I live for it, for it. And now they can't tell me the game's changed. All I got out there running around are small does, now there ain't no big bucks around here no more. And even the, Mark Metco over at Hunt Club, he said that whole side of their hunt club is roaming, he stays over on there.
They moved way north of the San property because they don't wanna be around with all big bucks.
It's just, it's just the wrong business to have in this county. And I know people benefit off of it, like the Adams, they're benefiting.
And I understand that economic, is it fair to, that some people gave and some people pay the price? When this land was zoned, agriculture or forestry to start with, he couldn't wait for commercial area and bought more than 100 acres.
If he wants to run that operation, they offered to buy his land, and he said, no, he won't do it. Offered to sell my house, 1.2 million, that's what I put into it. And he could not offer to buy that either, because then he could have an additional 28 acres to put ongoing and do what he wants to do and on with elsewhere. But I really didn't want to move from this county, because like I said, I've been coming here since the 70s and I love this county, but unfortunately, if he continues what he's doing over there, I'm gonna have to just pack up and move and take my losses on the house that we've worked so hard to retire and build.
Just to be super objective about it, and then I'll conclude. Thanks everyone for your patience. So, and I'm sure this might be impossible for you to say standing here, but if we limited it to 60 decibels or less at your house, and we monitored that.
No, no, not at our house.
At the property?
No, at our house is fine, but you're gonna sit there eight hours a day if you're definitely.
Whatever the enforcement mechanism is, I mean, that's a different question, but my question to you is, if we kept, if we kept him below 60 decibels, would that mean, based on your past experience, that you would, it wouldn't have an adverse effect on you? That's what I'm trying to get at.
60 decibels I can live with, and I told him that in February, but what he's doing is a bold lie. And I think over the Christmas holiday, when he trespass and took the sound check on our property, not inviting new people out, that was wrong. He invited y'all out when he wanted to be good, but then he wanted to come out by himself and do it, and he was dishonest, and that's wrong. So, I mean, let him run his permit out, I agree with that, and we'll see even two and a half more years. And if he's a good neighbor, and he lives up to his word, believes the mortars alone, then maybe we'll extend it out. But I don't think he can do that. I don't think he can do that, because he needs that explosion to rattle people.
Right, I appreciate your time.
Well, that's why I agree with Ms. Parrish in one way, let him prove that he can live to his new sound levels at the rest of his permit level. If he can do what he says for the remainder of the permit, then we can do it. He asked for the five years himself.
Right.
The county offered two, and he asked for five so he didn't have to come back.
And he's back at your list.
If you give him 10 now without letting him prove that he can do the lower, you can't, you give him exactly what he wants, you haven't let him prove that he's anything, that he can live up to his word.
Did y'all get to watch this video about the camp overnight camping?
Yeah.
I've never camped in a hotel before.
And the video clearly states that this six-building area is accommodated for overnight accommodations for 40 guests who pay early bar fees. It didn't mention hotels whatsoever. Is there any other question?
I appreciate it, I know it's not easy, so thank you.
Thank you both very much.
Bye.
For any other discussion regarding this agenda item?
I just wanted to say that when we originally heard this application several years ago, Mr. Parrish and Mr. Fraser and I were on that board, and I was on the planning commission some of that time as well, I believe, and I was very optimistic that we had finally found a good fit for this operation. Fortunately, when we, when we hear conflicting information from the neighbors, I'm not sure about that at all. I'm reluctant to broaden the permit when so many neighbors are clearly not happy with the way the current permit is functioning. And we do have a review in the future of this permit, at which point we could expand it if, if everyone could find agreeable terms. But I believe we were all on the same page and ready to deny it. I don't recall that you were the person that asked for the neighbors to go back and regroup, Mr. Parrish, I think another board member did that. But at any point, we aren't here tonight because we insisted the applicant come back. We are here again tonight because the applicant made the decision to withdraw his application and come back. It is my recollection that at the most recent meeting when we heard this application, we had more people in attendance that were against the application. And I wonder if some people aren't being kept at home due to the coronavirus as well.
Also, one of the letters of support is from this guy, Mark Vick, who runs the Hunt Club, the board, and he sent a letter supporting the application. He said they're good neighbors, contributors to the local community, so anyway, it seems to me like the majority of the neighbors are in support of his application. I realize that.
Could you sit forward, Mrs. Parrish? I'm sorry, some people are having a hard time hearing you.
It's a tough decision, I realize that any disturbance or any, you know, unknown encroachment is scary for anybody's home, I'm keenly aware of that. But I do think after this amount of investment and given the fact that you're gonna wanna come back, I think you'll be on extra good behavior to not upset the immediate neighbors just by a minute.
If I could add to some of my earlier comments, Ben, Jim?
This is Mr. Fraser.
The initial application was for five years, as requested by the applicant at that time, for review after five years. We're basically going through that review process now two and a, three and a half years early, because it started on last February, I guess. Anyway, not all the neighbors are happy, not all the information is available, and I think the review process has played itself out now that maybe, maybe it's not a good time to extend it, not to, not to increase the number of days, as it is significant, as Mr. Wittson pointed out, you're going from basically 36 days a month to 120. It's a tremendous increase for you.
Is there any further discussion?
Madam Chair, I'm just wondering if anybody can speak to the five ranges that were discussed because I'm not sure how, I mean, I can sit on my front porch and hear neighbors shooting from all over the place, but I don't, never know exactly where the noise is coming from. So I didn't know if there was anybody in the audience that could speak to the ranges in the area. There's a gentleman in the back.
But, I mean, public comment has, or public hearing has come and gone, the applicant could speak to it, that would be appropriate. Okay. Mr. Bligh?
So there is range on our land, where we turned up, it's been used by the local community, the neighbors. There's the Hunt Club where they're shooting as well, I believe they have a range, I've been told. Tim and Joyce have a range immediately adjacent to our land. My understanding, from talking to the neighbors further up the road, they have some personal shooting galleries that they use as well. So by our calculation, of the five range areas that they used before we arrived, we discontinued the use of our range. We did offer it to the police, if, on the one condition that the neighbors were happy, and only in that condition, that we would make our range freely available to the local law enforcement, and we'd train the property as well if there's enough of that. But otherwise, there's only four ranges in the area absent our range.
We are only shooting during the week?
Only during the week. We don't start until late Thursday in the morning, we finish by 5, we're done. We provided a sound table, I would welcome spot checks, I would be delighted, delighted for somebody to come and validate that what we're saying we're doing, we're actually are doing. And I would also, if allowed to continue, I would be delighted, with Joyce and others as well, to make sure that there was any, as always, with very firm of a thought, that we did something to immediately address it. So I laid out the table as well.
Can you explain why the noise is necessary?
We do need to simulate some stress-inducing situations. We can choose where we push it, the land isn't actually that narrow, kind of broadens out the tail end where Tim and Joyce live, and it goes to about two and a half thousand feet. So we can actually push it further into the woods as needed, that's what we've been trying to do. But we need to simulate situations where people who train the challenges are facing instances of gender violence, aggressive police officers, all the way up to an explosive attack. That is the one noise we make at lunchtime, where we drop a bang into a barrel, and that's a simulated car bomb going off, and that's the loudest registered noise that we've actually seen at the border, about maybe 60 decibels. That happens once a day when we drop it. Apart from that, it's normally a couple of shots here and there at 9 mil, 556 blank rounds, and they're very short, and we provided a table to show you exactly when they happen and how often. When there's one group, it only happens once, or it goes up to three groups, there may be rather than one shot, there may be three shots, but that shot in the morning would be one shot per hour, and it would normally be about 45 decibels, 48 decibels. But we can work it, we can move things around, we can set up screens, anything they want, really, and there'd be our guests on the land and we could test it out until they can't hear it, for sure.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion regarding this application?
Mr. Bligh, there was mention of four mortars. What is, what? What is... What are Joneses referring to, and where do those fit into what I heard when I was on your property recently?
So, we do day one of training offsite. So, in our office, we do class based training. Day two... So, day three, we do the mortar bombardment, and that is those little charges that you saw where we can drop into a barrel, shoot it up a shotgun. We've actually moved it all the way to the far end of the range area to limit the noise. I will say that when Tim and Joyce called us out on the fourteenth of February last year, we were making those noises a bit closer to their property, and they were happy with that, but I wasn't. And so, we pushed it even further out, and so we dropped down the noise quite considerably. And that happens on the third day, and it happens for what?
I mentioned to them, I asked them if sixty decibels at their house would be acceptable. Would sixty decibels on the property line be acceptable to you?
It should be, and I would say with a very small caveat, sometimes when it's a very frosty morning, the noise will travel a little bit further. And so, I would say that we registered sixty. It may go up to sixty-five depending on the weather, and we don't have any control. But certainly at their homes, sixty would be absolutely easy to achieve, and that should be outside their home, not inside. And if it's not, we can erect sound barriers, and we can do all sorts of things. Or we just stop using that particular sound effect if it's going to upset an adult. We have an adult in charge as well, so I'm sympathetic to your pet.
I just want to say that if you're living in Rampant County, you're going to be listening to gunshots. I have neighbors on both sides, and they regularly... I have one of them who's in the room here, has machine guns, cannons, you know, Sundays. If they feel like if they shoot us, they're right, it really doesn't bother me that much. I know it's not going to last for so long. But the irony here is that anybody who's even got just a few acres can shoot all they want, can shoot anything, and without a permit or without coming to the county for permission. So, it just seems ironic that we are spending this much time talking about that amount of noise.
It's not just a shooting. It's a commercial operation, it's a multi-faceted application, is what you're looking at. If it was just shooting, you probably wouldn't be here.
They wouldn't have to be here to shoot all they want. Shoot all they want. We, for a long time, this county, for long, for decades, has had the reputation of not being welcoming to business enterprises, and so it's... I mean, now that we have a chance to welcome somebody that's actually going to contribute to the local economy, it seems like it would be, you know, a wise thing to do.
I mean, I agree with that up to a point, Mr. Parrish, but I think ultimately, you know, if you're having a certain level of intensity, being in the agricultural forestry area is appropriate for the current level of intensity of the use. My concern is that the expanded use of the land would make it more akin, as other people have said, to an industrial area or something along those lines, whereas the intensity of the use increases, you should consider that a different zoning might be more appropriate. Is there no further discussion? Is there any further discussion? We have a motion and a second on the table.
Last question. If we were to find some enforcement mechanism or monitoring mechanism, would you be willing to agree to a one-year trial period, after which if whatever conditions we place were not met, that this expanded use would be revoked?
Absolutely. It's not in our interest to listen to anybody, really, who will be caught out so quickly. So, we would welcome that, and we will welcome the neighbors as well. I would say that, you know, we can maybe tell what noise is being made if we're still kind of close to their property. So, if they're willing to do that, we will move things back, and we will comply with any conditions you set.
I just... I mean, for me to be comfortable with it, I just... I think Mr. and Mrs. Jones obviously are the most directly affected by it. So, making sure that they're not adversely affected, even to a small degree, is to me critical for this move forward.
Absolutely. No, we'll do everything it takes to make sure that happens.
I think we pretty much exhausted the discussion in terms of the current motion and second that are on the table, which is to deny the expansion of the special exception application and keep the current terms in place for the remainder of the five-year period that there was the initial issuing of the special exception. So, I'm going to go ahead and call for the vote. And again, this is to vote to deny the expansion. Mr. Fraser?
Aye.
Mr. Don Haye?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
And I also, aye. So, at this point, I guess we are looking for an alternative motion.
So, I'll go ahead and make a motion. It's upsetting. Said way too much on subject, that we go ahead and approve his application in the hopes that he'll at least be more quiet than his neighbors and that he'll follow through on his promises to train the young schoolteachers and maintain the road and all the rest. So, anyway, I'll make the motion that we approve the application as presented.
You don't wish to... Oh, I should just ask for a second. I'm so sorry. Do we have a second regarding that motion?
Could I ask a question, point of order? I just wonder with all the looks back and forth here at the table, was this already pre-approved because...
Oh, it's...
I'm really getting bad feelings.
I can tell you I did research, but that's what you mean by pre-approved.
Well, I just wonder. I mean, it just... All this looking back and forth, I really hate to call my colleagues in question, but it's just really...
Mr. Fraser, I didn't want to talk over anybody. I was waiting to see if someone else was making a second. That's it.
Well, I'm sorry. Maybe I'm out of order, but it certainly is feeling very uncomfortable down here.
I can make a second for the sake of conversation or questions.
All right. So, we have a motion and a second to approve the special exception as is presented with the expansion. And I'd like us to have some discussion about this because I have a hard time believing that with everything we've heard, we would just go ahead and do this. I don't know if it's appropriate or not, but I'd like to hear from Mrs. Summers if we could. Summers, if you have any suggestions.
The reason I brought you up, and I appreciate that, is if we even consider putting stipulations on that require going out and doing tests when nobody knows that you're coming and all that good stuff, I'm trying to find out from you if we put stipulations on like this, if it's doable, and what it's going to take, and how we're going to make sure that you have what you need to do your job.
I can tell you that it's going to take a lot of time away from the office, away from other duties, to focus on one individual permit.
But it would be doable for you to do a random check. I assume you'd do that with other...
Yeah.
I mean, we recently had this complication with another special exception, this historic special exception, that limited the number of employees on site, and all the neighbors would call in to Summers and say, "Hey, Michelle, there's four people on site. Please come out and do a spot visit now." And I know that was a terrible instance for you.
I have been more than happy to do random spot visits.
If it's part of your schedule, maybe you need to include the scientific trait.
Most enforcement in this county is complaint-driven due to resources, and I would imagine this would be the same situation, that it would be complaint-driven.
So, as written, there would be nothing to enforce, other than the time and days. If they're talking about enforcement, I assume you're talking about potentially adding a decibel limit to the permit as a condition, in which case we do have equipment to measure that.
Right.
But absent a condition, there's nothing to enforce.
Sure.
Well, I can predict that if this outfit does not pay attention to the noise level, that when it comes back up in two and a half years, he's probably not going to get approval. I'm not going to be here, but that would be my prediction. So, I think he's a better businessman than that to jeopardize the reapproval in just a couple of years because he's putting a big investment in this place. So, it's just common sense to me that it would work out.
I would only be comfortable with approval with three conditions that I can think of immediately. One would be no greater than... Sound no greater than sixty-five decibels on the property line with the Joneses because I think by virtue of that, and I don't know the distance from property boundary to your house, but I would hope that sixty-five on the property boundary would mean almost nothing where you live or very little. Go ahead.
Our house is five hundred and seventy feet.
So, it's the same... It's effectively the same thing.
Very close.
Okay.
It happened that it's totally bigger against the forest trees.
Okay. So, one condition I would just say for discussion would be sixty... No more than sixty decibels at their home. And the second condition would be a one-year trial period during which there had to be full compliance with that decibel limit at their home. And... Sorry, it's getting late.
I think the other item that was up for discussion was the number of days per year total.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. And I would say no more than one hundred days per year. And I don't know how we could do this, but those days skewed during times when leaves are on the trees, I think makes a lot of sense because obviously if it's loaded in the wintertime, that has more adverse effect on the neighbors. Go ahead.
One of us running down after a hunt cover from the leaves, Ron, with hunting season starting.
That hunting season's an interesting idea. From what I understand about leaves, it's not necessarily a deterrent to sound because I've come across this issue before. Leave, you'd think they would buffer sound, but they don't necessarily buffer sound, is from what I understand. But, yeah, it would be... It would be interesting to consider the hunting season aspect because I'm not sure if that would make a difference on the deer coming around. I mean, it is interesting that this guy, Mark Vitko, supported Mr. Bligh's application, and he has the hunt club right there next to him. So, what about the... Mr. Bligh, what about the hunting season issue?
Forgive me, as you can tell by the funny accent, I'm not from here originally. How long is hunting season? Because I know there's different, like brown, black...
Well, the gun season is... I know there's also a bow season and a musket season, but the main season that people are interested in is the actual gun season, I think, and that starts when?
Number?
Ron, do you know when the gun season is?
Yes. November fourteenth, second Saturday, that was expected Saturday. They have a lot of two weeks, four hours, three, four weeks before that. Not at all. Again, it was right.
So, it's a few months, is it?
Yeah. It's... Well, the gun season is half of November and all of December, and like one week in January, right?
We can definitely limit it. We can try and, as you say, focus hard in the summer of the non-hunting season. If there's any particular days that you prefer to hunt, then we can try and avoid those absolutely. It may be a bit difficult with the World Bank to say you can't do it for two months.
Right.
We can try and condense it.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
So, Mr. Adams has his hand up back there. Is it okay to recognize him?
I'm sorry. If you're going to make a comment, please come up and use the microphone. And I really think we've had a lot of back and forth this evening, and I...
Just one quick comment. We're here talking about guns and shooting, and we're worried about the hunting season. When hunting season's full swing, we hear guns going off all over the place, and never with Mike. That's why I don't understand why this noise thing is still a thing. I mean, y'all just come down there, and you would hear all kinds of random shots going off, and nothing from this man. Just myself, my brother, my family, the hunt club, it's Big Woods Hunt Club, there's, what, twenty-five, thirty members there, and then all the other surrounding neighbors shooting and carrying arms. So, I don't understand why we're just here. That's all I got to say, just so we're all clear.
Thank you.
All right.
I would just say you've got to be careful of how many months you cut out because if you're saying a hundred days and you cut out four months, then all of a sudden your months that are loud are going to be a lot fuzzier.
Well, and I'm reluctant to do it as a hundred days a year because then the neighbors could have a hundred days back to back if there's no conditions, if it's not a spread.
I think it'd still be ten per month.
It's ten per month.
It's just added...
Just a hundred per year total.
Yes, ten per month.
I think that's what I was gathering.
So, anyway, let's just go ahead and vote on it.
I want to make sure these conditions are clear. So, the conditions in the permit are...
Are you asking for... Are you asking for conditions?
Yeah. I mean, it's the only way I can support it.
All right. I'll amend the motion after you.
I don't think we can hear. I'm so sorry, Mr. Parrish.
I'm sorry. Yeah. So, I'll amend the motion that the noise amounts to no more than sixty decibels and that there's a one-year compliance period and that it's limited to one hundred days per year.
Is this sixty decibels at the home? And do the property owners want our staff showing up in their driveway randomly?
Well, that's why I was talking about the property line.
I would much rather it be the property line, and then the owner can grant us permission to go anytime they happen to be operating. We have the right to be there on the property line.
Y'all can operate like that, Mr. Bligh.
Yeah. And the other thing is there's a track, public track leading there, so you'll hear the same as you would at Tim and Joyce's house on the road when you break the trees. So, you can definitely come on our land and come and watch a course as well. Please do.
So, I'll amend the motion to include that there's no more than sixty decibels of noise. It's a one-year compliance period review, and it's limited to a hundred days per year.
What happens after a year? This board's got into...
Well, if there's no complaints, then he keeps going.
But so if there are complaints and there's notice of violation, then you can revoke the permit.
Is that what you mean?
Yeah, absolutely.
So, the board, that doesn't need to be a condition. That's built into the zoning ordinance. But what I do want to be... How long is this entire permit and condition is going to run for? Is it going to replace the old permit? So, another five years?
No, it's going to be the remaining of his five-year period.
I think the most efficient way to do it is through the remaining permit, and we do an annual review through the end of the permit, which I think would be two... Would be two years.
But we're going to review it any day randomly, and if there's a violation, they're going to get a letter. And if they don't respond to that letter, they're going to get another letter, and then they're going to be in court with Art.
Okay. So, Mr. Bligh, I mean, it's an important point. I mean, a violation is a violation, and you'll be agreeing to that condition, and that would lead to revocation if you violate the condition.
Absolutely. And the only thing I'd ask is if we could have sixty-five of our land edge, anticipating that would then be sixty at their property, if that's okay, and then hopefully I'll never meet your lawyer.
We said sixty, I think.
You said sixty-five at the property line before and sixty in the driveway, so he's wanting sixty-five at the property line.
Which is what you said.
I'm not telling you... I just need to make sure we write it down correctly.
Okay. I amend my motion to include that.
Okay. So, you've amended your motion, Mr. Parrish? Okay, so you've amended your motion, Mr. Parrish, to include all those conditions. Ms. Donahue, I believe you seconded this, do you wish to still second that motion? Yes.
And to be clear, this has nothing to do with the hunting season?
No.
I'm sorry. Is that better? Thank you. This, this does not include the discussion regarding the hunting season.
Is there any further discussion? Mr. Frazier? Ms. Donahue? Aye. Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
And I vote nay. Thank you. You have your expansion of your special exception. That takes us to the next item on the agenda, oh, the public comment period. Let's take about a five-minute recess before we begin that. Thank you, everyone.
Sorry, we're running a few supervisors short. It will just be another moment. What are you doing?
I'm trying to keep the fans turned down. It doesn't always work. That's good. I'm so glad.
Christine, it's the men. Who would have thought? Who would have thought? Thank you, Mr. Frazier.
Should have appointed him to something good while he's going.
Missed opportunity. We have company for with us? Okay, great. Thank you so much. Thank you very much. That takes us to our next item on the agenda. Oh, one, the public comment period. At this point, anyone in the public can speak on any number of topics. Similar rules apply as they did earlier. Please come to the microphone, address your comments to the board. Keep your comments to three to five minutes, please. Identify your name or yourself by name and the district that you're from. And if you could raise your hand to be recognized by the chair, we'll work our way through the public comments. Mr. Glennie.
Paige Glennie, Jackson District.
Push the handle.
I did. Now it works.
Thank you.
Paige Glennie, Jackson District. In regards to my comments earlier this afternoon, in regards to behind-the-scenes emails, this is a formal FOIA request for all correspondence, email or otherwise, between the Board of Supervisors, County Attorney, the County Administrator, or any public citizens in regards to the resolution on the rejection of local firearm restriction authority. You got that, Mr. Curry?
I'm getting it off the tape.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to speak?
Is that, Mr. Glennie, is that irrespective of the vote tonight?
Absolutely.
Okay.
This is the only additional opportunity to speak in the course of this meeting. So if you have something to say on any number of topics, this would be your opportunity to do so. Ms. Miller.
Demaris Miller, Hampton District. And I'm here to speak in favor of the resolution that will protect our Second Amendment rights here in this county from any intrusion beyond what is already restricted by the state code. I have no -- I have read the resolution that was in the newspaper. I have also read a version of the resolution that cuts down on the verbiage that one of the members tonight is going to introduce. I just want to make absolutely certain that we do not restrict any of the citizens of the Commonwealth of Virginia when or other states who are legal carriers of permits in this Commonwealth, who have a legal permit to carry in the Commonwealth of Virginia, that we place no restrictions on anyone like that in this county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller. Yes, Mr. Dixon.
Move that again.
Yeah, push the -- yeah.
There we go. Terry Dixon, Stonewall Hawthorne District. So I'm here to speak that I would urge you to vote for the resolution for the not to put any restrictions on citizens of Rappahannock County for this board and any board in the future. As far as the travel goes, I think it's critical that we keep the travel in the bill due to the fact that it's a, in my opinion, the people who are instituting the allowance to put these restrictions are going to mess up travel in Virginia. It's like when you go north from here and you have a choice. Do you go through Maryland? Do you go through DC? Well, do I bring a gun or not bring a gun? Do I take the risk of being arrested and put in jail and spending eighty or $100,000 in legal fees because I carried a firearm to protect myself in one of these states? You know, DC is fairly easy to go around. Maryland's not so easy to go around. If these cities and localities in Virginia start putting restrictions on firearms, then what do you do? If you're going down to North Carolina, do you not take 29 because you don't want to go through Charlottesville? You don't want to go to Manassas or Leesburg or wherever that may be. So I urge you to keep the resolution as it is with no restrictions on here and for travel. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dixon. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Mr. Yow?
Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you.
My name is Robert Yow from the Piedmont District. I have read both the original proposal and the alternative proposal. And at the end of the day, I think we ought to have to pass the original proposal as amended, or in its current form, sorry. If you insist on further changes, I think you need to explain to everybody here, including your fellow members, why you want that change. I want you to help me understand why it's necessary to take out references to visitors. As the previous person just spoke, if I'm traveling from place to place, I'm now going to have to worry about trying to figure out whether I want to go around Charlottesville or Richmond or other places. And this statement makes it clear to not just the residents of this county, but also to anybody coming into the county, traveling through, staying, whatever, that we support your rights and you do not have to worry about looking up extra laws here. This needs to take a strong stance and tell the Virginia Legislature that we do not support what you've done, what you're going to do, because if I, from what I have heard, Governor Northam is going to convene a session here in August to possibly consider and resurrect some of the bills that were defeated. This is just one other attempt. We need to continue to take that strong statement and stand like a wall with the rest of the counties, and we need to be ready. I just want to remind you, Article One, Section 13 of the Virginia Constitution, which Article One is basically our Bill of Rights, that a well-regulated militia composed of the body of the people trained to arms is the proper, natural, and safe defense of a free state. Therefore, the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed. This new law, Section 15.2-915E, is a clear violation of that, and I do not support that. So again, you need to stand here and you need to make a strong statement against Governor Northam and the Virginia Legislature. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yow. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Yes, Mr. Deakins.
Good evening. Good evening. Dick Deakins, Hampton District. I wholeheartedly support the resolution, the VCDL resolution in its entirety. I urge the county to join the growing numbers of counties and towns that have already passed this resolution as it was written. And this is the companion statement that we need to send that will tie in and dovetail into the fact that we were the 23rd county to become a Second Amendment sanctuary. I agree also with Mr. Yow and perhaps other people in the audience that we have to stop this constant erosion of our constitutional rights by an out-of-control politicians to Richmond. And enough is enough. There's no gray area in the Second Amendment. We have a right to bear and keep arms, and that should be untouched. And I'm looking forward to unanimous decision that we can send to Richmond and stop this nonsense.
Thank you very much, Mr. Deakins. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Yes, Ms. Propper.
Wow. Sorry. There you go. I read what was put in the paper, that where is, where is, where is, yes. And yes, keep the Second Amendment as it is written for the Constitution of the United States, for the whole United States, and also the one for Virginia. I'm looking at the situation all around us, and it's getting more and more intense. And I see that nothing is being done in a bigger sense to control some of the things that are going on. It's as though we're sitting as a frog in a water kettle. Sit on the stove. You turn the heat up on the frog. You put the frog in the water. And as the water gets warmer, he doesn't realize he's being cooked. He just sits there and relaxes in that warm water, and next thing you know, he's done. So I say keep it as it is. Don't add anything. I don't even know why we are having this discussion. We have already decided what we wanted. You guys have put it down. You agreed on it. I don't even know why we're taking time to even discuss anything else to be done because we've already decided what we want it done. So let's not be the frog that's in the water being cooked slowly. Let's stand up, stand strong, not just here, but the whole nation. We need to stand strong because there's a force that's coming against us now, and we need to wake up. Everybody needs to wake up and see what's coming against us. This is not just normal stuff. This is serious things that are coming against us. There's groups that are coming against us. There's groups that's coming against us to destroy our history, our way of life, our well-being. I mean, there are people that fought and died for what we stand for. They fought and died. There are people that took time to set up a constitution that all the rest of the world is in envy of our constitution, our rights and everything. That's why people fight and give their lives to try to even get here to this country because they know that we have one of the best governments in all the world. Let's stand up as the others did before us and stand true to who we are as Americans.
Thank you, Mrs. Propper. Is there anyone else that's wishing to speak? Mr. Nash?
Hard act to follow here. My name is Jacque Nash, Hampton District. I served my country as a combat veteran in the Marine Corps and fought for everything I believe this country stood for. Among them is the Second Amendment. I support wholeheartedly the VCDL resolution. I was also, I used to be a Marine and I used to be a lawyer. But we don't need to have any wordsmith here tinkering around with the VCDL resolution as written. We want to show our solidarity with the other five counties or six counties that have already done it. After we get involved in litigation, we're all in the same boat. I'm willing and confident that if you pass the resolution as introduced, we'll be better off for it. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Nash. And thank you for your service. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? This will be your last opportunity to speak during this meeting. If there's no one else that wishes to speak, this public comment period is closed. That takes us to the next agenda item, which is the Flint Hill Volunteer Fire and Rescue Company for update. Are we able to have that this evening? No?
As I noted to you just a moment ago, I believe there was a structured fire. And I did exchange emails with President Burke earlier today, but it doesn't appear to be here now.
Okay.
Where's the structured fire, any idea? Since where?
Castleton area.
Okay.
I wonder if it might be appropriate, since we can't engage that this evening, if we could have an update during our work session? Because I believe that was one of the items that we agreed on, was that we get a monthly update from that company. Thank you, Mr. Curry. That takes us to the next item on the agenda, the rejection of the local firearms restriction authority. This is something that I asked the County Administrator to place on the agenda this evening because it was brought to my attention that the VCDL had formulated some language to reject the authority that has been granted to local governments under the state code of Virginia, And I felt like with everything going on these days, it was important not to stand silent on this, but to take a stand that this is something that we are not interested in doing as a county. I was encouraged to see a lot of other counties have already taken this up. And I noticed that actually Culpeper has it on their agenda for tomorrow in the same VCDL format that we are looking to adopt this evening. And I don't often like to make a motion, but since I asked for this agenda item, I would make the motion that we adopt the original VCDL language resolution for no local firearms restrictions as formulated by VCDL and included on the agenda this evening. And that's my motion.
I would, Madam Chair, I would like to second that motion. However, I do feel that we need to separate tourism from gun rights. I don't think they're necessarily closely related. And I was wondering if you'd be willing to just drop the one sentence that talks about tourism. The rest of it's still there. The visitors is still there. Everything else is still there. And of course, what really matters is after the "therefore," which obviously is unchanged. So I'm wondering if you'd be willing to amend your motion to accommodate that so we can have a unanimous vote here.
Point of order, I kind of worked on a couple of words here that might be sufficient for some of your fears there.
Oh, sure.
Would that be permissible?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Frazier.
If the problem is tourism or visitors, why couldn't we just say, without, I'm trying not to do any damage to the original language, but, and I greatly fear the wrath of Jacque Nash here because he said we didn't need any lawyers or wordsmiths. So I'm trying to tread carefully here. But I'm thinking, I think where it starts out is the third paragraph, whereas the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors acknowledges a significant economic contribution made to our community by tourists and visitors, why couldn't we say acknowledges a significant economic contribution made to our Commonwealth by travelers through Rappahannock County visiting other parts of the Commonwealth, something to that effect?
Yeah, that makes sense to me. I just don't want to link tourism to gun rights. I just think they're two different issues.
Right, but I think that it's very important, like Mr. Yow pointed out and some of the others, that we should be safe to go from community to community.
Visitors is one thing. Visitors is one thing. Tourism, but that's fine, Mr. Frazier. That's perfectly, that suits me fine.
Mr. Frazier, could you repeat what you're suggesting? I think it's paragraph three.
That's supposed to be my line. I'm supposed to ask people to repeat things.
He's supposed to ask for repeats.
Oh, okay.
Well, let's see. Go back to the third, whereas, okay. Whereas the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors acknowledges a significant economic contribution made to our Commonwealth by visitors and travelers. Or maybe we can work on that there, but...
That's fine. Visitors and travelers.
And does not wish to discourage travel to or through Rappahannock County and throughout the Commonwealth. So this would be, we're basically telling our other localities that we're going to treat your people and we expect our people to be treated the same way when they travel through your community. That's basically all this really was, the impetus of this language. It could have probably been worded a little better.
So that's, so in other words, that's your, you're seconding the motion and that's it? I know you got to revise your motion. Yeah, okay.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I captured this accurately to where the third paragraph would read. Whereas the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors acknowledges a significant economic contribution made to the Commonwealth by visitors and travelers throughout the Commonwealth and does not wish, oh, no, I'm sorry, made by visitors and travelers and does not wish to discourage travel throughout the Commonwealth. Did I capture that correctly?
Yeah, I probably said, I probably repeated myself three or four times, but I think that does it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I will amend my motion to reflect that new language. Thank you. And do I have a second? Did you second my motion, Mr. Frazier? Oh, no, Mr. Parrish did.
I'll second it, or Mr. Frazier can second it. I don't care.
Second by acclamation.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. Is there any further discussion on this language or on this resolution this evening?
I guess my only other suggested change is I wasn't on the board in December. I think that discussion on the Second Amendment Sanctuary County was entirely symbolic because it was a response to a Democratic-controlled legislature and what might come. Here, we're, my understanding is that we are responding to a provision in state code under a particular section, and we are, we have a choice. We could say in response to that provision, no, we are not going to enact any local ordinances more restrictive than what the state allows. Or the other choice is to say nothing at all, which would have the same effect. I understand and respect the importance of making a statement. I'm ready to make a statement in the form of a resolution tonight, and I'll support it. My only suggestion, just to make this more specific, and I appreciate Mr. Nash doesn't want wordsmithing, and I don't want to belabor this, but I was just wondering in the first paragraph if we could just state what it is we are responding to. And my suggestion was simply to say, whereas an acknowledgement of the deep commitment of the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors to the right of all citizens to keep and bear arms and in direct response to Section 15.2-915E of the Code of Virginia. Because unlike the vote in December, we are making a statement in direct response to a provision in state code that we will not, as a local governing body, take any further restrictive action vis-à-vis gun rights. And I just, I put that out there as a suggestion because then it frames the rest of the language in a very specific way that relates to exactly what we're responding to. But if others can't live with it, that's fine. It was just a suggestion. And I appreciate Mr. Frazier's amendment.
To amend, just, we wanted to amend the end of that paragraph and add that to it. So since we previously declared Rappahannock County to be a Second Amendment sanctuary, and therefore, I just saw the word take off. It went by me before I could get my hands on it. Therefore, in direct response to the General Assembly's...
Section 15.2-915E. That's fine. Yeah, I just, I just think, I think the VCDL document buries the lead a little bit because, I mean, I've talked to a lot of citizens about this, and many people didn't even know what this related to. So I think it behooves us to at least state upfront what we're, why we're saying something.
Right. I understand that argument, but I'm just thinking, we already declared that we were a Second Amendment sanctuary. So in response to that, and also because of this new legislation, now here we are again.
It does reference that code section in the "therefore" at the end of the resolution.
Right. Yeah, that was my point about burying the lead. You have to get all the way there to know.
If the inclination is to lead with that and then close with that, I think that is a good specification that doesn't narrow the resolution in any way. And I don't personally have an objection to that, if none of the other board members do. I would amend my motion to reflect that change at the end of the first whereas.
So what I would, if I could just offer this, if you agree, first paragraph, whereas an acknowledgement of the deep commitment of the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors to the rights of all citizens of visitors to Rappahannock County to keep and bear arms and in direct, oh, I'm sorry, Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors previously declared Rappahannock County to be a Second Amendment sanctuary and in direct response to Section 15.2-915E. And I'm sorry, I'm speaking loudly, but, I mean, quickly, so I don't know if you caught that. But I think just out of clause, the last paragraph, just to frame it. Here.
Write it down, sir.
We can't blame it on him now.
Bought several copies of this in this cabinet.
Thank you, Mr. Curry.
Mr. Parrish, are you okay with
Yes.
the term "visitors" in the first paragraph?
Yes.
You're okay with it?
Yeah, I think visitors are fine. Visitors are good.
I'm trying. And there's a typo in the last paragraph. I'll mark that. Hopefully you can get it. Okay, where is the acknowledgement? Okay, sorry. Whereas an acknowledgement of the deep commitment of the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors to the rights of all citizens, of and visitors to Rappahannock County to keep and bear arms, and the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors having previously declared Rappahannock County to be a Second Amendment sanctuary, and in direct response to Section 15.2915E of the Code of Virginia. Got it? Thank you. Thanks for your patience. I apologize.
Thank you. And I think, like I said, that to my mind doesn't narrow the document additionally. It just gives a specification at the beginning.
I didn't pick up that one typo either. Thank you.
So it's those changes to the first paragraph, the changes to the third paragraph previously discussed, and changing.
You were going to leave out the sanctuary.
And the therefore paragraph. Mr. Frazier prefers that we leave it in there.
Ah, thank you.
I'm not going to. Mr. Frazier, am I correct, you prefer to leave the, leave the link to the prior vote in December on the Sanctuary County in there? Do I understand that correctly?
Yes, I believe we should do that.
Okay. I'll live with that, with the changes to paragraph three.
I mean, that's my understanding, is that we're keeping the Second Amendment Sanctuary language is still included in the first paragraph, correct?
In the first paragraph, I left it in there, yeah.
Thank you very much. I will therefore amend my motion to include the changes that were just read and the changes that were previously indicated for paragraph three, and in the therefore section to change in the second line, the capital T, and that to a lowercase t. Mr. Parrish, would you still care to second?
I will still go ahead and second it. I do want to say that I am not a fan of the word sanctuary, but it's, I'm strictly about, you know, supporting the Second Amendment just strictly that way, but I will second it. We've already done it, and I will second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. Is there any further discussion? With that, we have a motion and a second on the floor. If there's no further discussion, I'll take the vote. Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
And I also. And that takes us to the last item on the agenda this evening. A reminder for our September meeting, due to the holiday in September, our meeting that month is actually on Wednesday, September 2nd.
That's right.
When we also have a work session on the 17th. So how should we wrap this meeting up, Mr.?
A couple of things that I want to make sure we take care of. One is you do have a planned work session, so you have the choice of continuing this meeting to that date or calling for a special meeting. It's probably just easier to continue the meeting in the courthouse. But the question I have is where the September 2nd regular meeting will take place. And this room is not available, and we do have the option to use the high school auditorium for the evening if necessary, but not a day. I don't anticipate any large public hearings coming up. We do have a budget public hearing. It would be at night, but I don't imagine that would draw a ton of people. So I'm not sure what the board, how the board wants to handle that. But if it's going to be somewhere that's not normal, we need to have that straight.
Do you know what the capacity in the courthouse currently is?
I believe it's 113, but that's scattered around to the jury room and the judge room and.
Is there a way to spread out in the courthouse?
If you were to go up there right now for court, they've actually marked X's on the benches, and it cuts the capacity down to like 12.
That's what I was wondering. It was social distancing.
I would have been surprised at 20 for sure.
Yeah, I was thinking it was going to be less than 30, definitely, which could be problematic in a meeting.
The day session is problematic to find alternate.
I wondered if Washington Firehouse might be available, if we could have a meeting there.
I don't know. I never have good luck.
What other, I'm trying to think of other big spaces.
In the evening, it's, we're fine with the high school. It's just the day. So the question is, do you want to convene at the courthouse during the day and take care of your business that is less likely to draw a crowd, and then have the evening session at, in the auditorium at the high school?
I do feel confident that we could probably structure the agenda so that we could address those concerns of the day session and probably have less than 20 or 25 people in the courthouse. And then I would just adjust the agenda so we weren't doing anything that might have a larger attendance for the evening. May make for a later night, just depending on what comes in between now and then, but it certainly is possible, if the rest of the board feels comfortable with that. I think, I think that'll be fine. I don't think we'll have a whole lot of choice. So do you need a motion to continue the meeting, Mr. Curry, or? Okay, I would make a motion that we continue this meeting of the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors until Monday, August the 17th. I believe we're also doing our work sessions at 7:00 PM. And the space is available, correct?
Court house.
No, at the courthouse. That's correct. At the Rappahannock County courthouse. So there's a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.